Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call this meeting of the city council to order. Would you please rise and join me for our flag salute?
A pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for the record, we are missing our fire staff tonight. Chief Clinger's down picking up an ambulance and Assistant Chief is at an academy graduation. Other than that, we have all council members present. Consent calendar, item three. And items A through J.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent calendar, items A through J.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilman Kinzer and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson to accept the consents calendar, items A through J. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries unanimously. We are now to the public comment period. Looks like we have a lot of interested people tonight, so that's great. Glad to have you all. I'll remind everybody of the rules. When you approach the podium, please state your name and address, and then you have three minutes to address the council. Please keep your comments to the council and do not engage in cross-examination or argument. Who's first? Neil.
Dr. Neo Ishihara, 801 McLean. I understand that the city council received a letter from the mayor about me and Christine. And the mayor is under the delusion I applied to the city library board positions that were open. I did not really want the job. I applied to show that there are many city residents with qualifications to serve and was urged by many people to apply. I had no illusions. I was on the hell no pile, and I was never seriously considered as evidence of my interview, which was five minutes as opposed to 30 minutes for others. I was there when Christine talked to two council members and mentioned Tim Howland, and her purpose was to make you aware that Scientology may color his actions and discussions. I do not believe Dr. Howland is ashamed of being a Scientologist, and we never disparage Dr. Howland or Scientology. Christine provided a blog entry from the internet by a friend of his who received a disconnection letter and enlisted reasons why his friend left Scientology. Christine served on the school board with Dr. Howland, and at the time, did not understand some of the things he said, but once he disclosed to her he was a Scientologist, then her understanding was improved. She said many times she wished someone would have told her from the start of her term that she couldn't, so she could understand his positions better. To accuse me of trying to disparage a fellow applicant is very sad. I didn't want the job, and you would, I would never do that. Christine does speak for, does not speak for the school district or the school board. That's Jim Callio and Phil Brockman's job. Your effort to shut down First Amendment rights of private citizens by intimidation, whether it be for a signature gather at Fruit Millie or through city council, public comment instructions, or through official letters, is appalling to me. Many of us here have also served in the military and supported and defended the Constitution. Do not, and I don't need a lecture about First Amendment rights. It's become a habit of the mayor on misrepresenting me to all of you, so I hope that clears up things. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Next, please.
My name's Ed Carrul. I live at 501 Fidalgo Street. First, I'd like to thank you all for the improvements you've done on Jamison Street. It really helps my commute greatly, and I appreciate the work you did there and on the rest of the streets also. And next, I'd just like to say that I'm opposed to the merger of the library with the county for two reasons. One is for the choice of the head librarian. To me, I guess as I get older, seniority seems more important, and I kind of disagree with the current government's position. It seems like that inexperience trumps experience. To me, it's the other way around. The candidate with the 25 years' experience is more qualified than the one with two. The other thing I object to is the loss of sovereignty that we have when we turn over our library to the county. When I mentioned this to the mayor, he said, you know, does it really matter? He could appoint whoever he wants to head our library committee. But to me, it matters because as long as it's in the city, funds, funds in the city have to be spent here. Once the, once the library is owned by the county, then the funds can be spent anywhere in the county, and it's going to be up for the commissioners to determine how much goes locally and how much might go to a library in Snohomish or in Big Lake. So, those are the two things. And even if, even if the money is distributed fairly, if we enter into the system, more of our money is going to have to go to administration unless it's going to be able to be spent on books and our library, our librarians. I think there's a time, you know, I really appreciate the councils being tight with our money and not, you know, being frivolous, spending it on whatever. I appreciate that. But I think there's a time when you can be penny wise and pound foolish, and while we might save money in the short run by being in this partnership, I think in the long run, if the city citizens have to pay for a library district, which might include a library in Snohomish and Big Lake and Clear Lake, we don't know how many libraries they're going to want to build, we might actually be spending more money in the long run on the library system than if we just kept it here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
My name is Mary Anderson, and I reside at 928 Beachley Road, inside the city limits. There are now three inter-local agreements before you regarding the Cedar Woolley Library and the Central Skagit Library District. Although the preparers will vociferously disagree with me, all three really boil down to annexation without a vote. It will be claimed that under annexation, we would lose everything, and these binding agreements will protect the citizenry from losing all. But the lady doth protest too much, methinks. What our current library offers is far more precious than just 500 local history books. We have more old Stanley Gardeners than the Seattle and King County libraries combined. We have more Reginald Hills available than does the Los Angeles County Library System, which I know because I have a relative down there who frequently reads online but cannot obtain some authors that way, authors we have, which now are out of print, either online or in hand. Yet, these inter-local agreements are transferring this precious, enjoyed, and frequented collection to the Central Skagit Library to manage as they will. You should be aware that their library director recently reported to the county commissioners regarding the 16,000-square-foot building they're proposing. It should be a facility with, quote, "space for activities rather than the actual physical collection," unquote. She observed that, quote, "While the physical collection may be shrinking, the library must be large enough to provide meeting space, study rooms, computer training rooms, and markers, maker space activities tied to the community," unquote. Please note that the actual physical collection will be shrinking under her watch. That means the precious volumes paid for by the residents of Cedar Woolley will be disposed of because, according to the Central Skagit Library, it's more important for this facility to be a community center. No matter what anyone says to the contrary, physical books are not a primary concern for the Central Skagit Library. Therefore, handing the Cedar Woolley Public Librarian's Collection over to them will be a grave disservice to your community, the people who live in and enjoy our city library, and all the others in the county who go out of their way to visit our library and enjoy its exceptional collection. The people need to be asked with a vote before this transfer goes through. Every one of you, I believe, knows that is the right thing to do. Please, listen to your conscience and allow the people of Cedar Woolley their opportunity to vote on annexation before you give our library away to people who will not value it. Thank you for listening, and I wish you all a very happy holiday season.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening, city council members.
Name and address, please.
Oh, yeah, forget it. Helga Anderson, 928 Beachley Road, Cedar Woolley. Good evening, council members. I believe that most of you are decent and non-selfish people who take your service to those you represent very seriously. If my information is correct, there are over 600 families of those you represent who are depending on the generosity of the food bank here in Cedar Woolley every Wednesday. What concerns me a great deal is whether you have been provided all the information and facts that you need in order to make a proper decision on the so-called partnership proposal. We know, we, the group, so to speak, we know every detail and legality in this proposal, and I fear that the information that you have been provided has been either skewed or withheld for reasons to make us look like a group of discontent liars, which also have been published in Skagit Valley Herald. What many business and political leaders often forget or not thinking through is that decisions often have consequences, which often turns the most well-intended project into a monster. Therefore, I would like you to evaluate all the pros and cons in this so-called partnership proposal very carefully before you cast your vote, so you won't add another 600 families to the mercy of the food bank. Taxes will go up. They will go up. They will go down to begin with, but then they will go up, and nobody can tell what these taxes will be a few years from now. I want, I am sure that you don't want to throw the Cedar Woolley residents under the bus with a well-intended project that turned into a nightmare for the taxpayers, not only in the city but also in the district. It is their money, and it's your legacy at stake. You will be living next door to them. You will meet them at the store. You will share worship with them after casting the vote that they were, they were never allowed to cast. And if everything goes wrong, that is what you will be remembered for. Or if, on the other hand, the citizens of Cedar Woolley were fully informed and were allowed to vote on the proposal, and if things then will go wrong, they will be responsible for the project. That perhaps wasn't so great, and no blame will go to you as you, as, and you actually did the service you were elected for. You represented them but not made the decision over their heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Helga, while you're here, I just, I have a question for you.
Really?
In your paper the other day, people are asking me, which one are you? So I'm wondering, of the Godfather, Napoleon, and Rasputin, which one was me? Because I can't answer the question.
Maybe you were not one of them. I don't know. But on the other hand, I never, I never engage in the conversations about my, my writings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for public comment period? Deborah, has you been? Dennis?
Yes, Deborah Peterson. I'm going to speak on behalf of the library right now, 802 Ball Street, and I'm coming aware too, as is everyone probably in this room, of various rumors and things going around. And one of the rumors I heard recently was that I was responsible for the moratorium on the office pizza building, and I would like to say, no, uh-uh. I was not aware of any of that, and I was not responsible for that. I never suggested that, so it wasn't me. So if anyone has any questions about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Dennis?
My name is Dennis O'Neil. I reside at 109 Telkot Street, and I'm definitely, I can see the benefits of the library consolidation, but I think when you take away the voter's right to vote on initially, I think you did everybody a very big disservice. I mean, the discussion was, well, we need this in order to work through our negotiation speedily and all that. It's been a year almost since it started. I also noticed something, other things that bother me. It really, it really, I hate to say it because I know nobody likes comparison, but it reminds me an awful lot of that deluxe deal that Rick was here and, I don't know if anybody else in the council was here. I certainly was walking down the streets with Janice and everything with a petition against the city council and the mayor, and of course, the mayor was accused of a lot of things, and there was an impeachment going. And a lot of the councilmen then didn't really like what occurred, but they let it occur, and they regretted it later. And that's why I think a few of them aren't up there anymore. And it does seem like it's going that way now, and I keep looking at how this thing started, and it seemed almost like somebody had a mandate. I'm looking at the election results back in 2016. I don't see it. A lot of people didn't even bother to come and vote because there wasn't much of a selection of candidates, and that includes the council and the mayor. You know, you've got Keith, not picking on him, but 394 votes elected him over Kevin Loy, and that accounted to, I can't remember, 30-some, 30-some percent of registered voters even bothered to vote. And the council was the same way. There wasn't any mandate from the voters, but a mandate was assumed, and you allowed the voters to be bypassed. Everybody up there voted to go with direct negotiations right after the election. You all approved it, and now you're looking at approving taxation after you've sort of always rung the bell and said, look at us, we're not going to do a 1% property tax increase. But then you're going to approve one of the biggest, this is going to be one of the biggest taxes in Skagit County. And I said two weeks ago that if anybody's getting a raise around here, any money, it should be these people over here that don't get raises, and they can't go out and get a second job or a third job, and that's the city department, that's the police department, the fire department, and everybody up there. They're sitting pretty much static for the last 10 years, and here you are, the money we do have, you're going out and spending on a library that's not necessary. And it seems like it's open-ended on the funding and with very little recourse back to the voters or to you once it's agreed to. There's nothing in here that's going to protect the voters, and you're going to have to come back out into the community and face people in your business like Ricks and Brett and Chuck. You're pretty outspoken about a lot of things and right on those stones. Brenda, everybody up there, and some people don't seem to get it, but you will. I think you're going to hear about it.
Right off 30 seconds, Dennis.
Okay, thanks. But it reminds me so much of the deluxe proposal because of the same way. Everybody went deaf until after it was done, and everybody rose up in town and said, this isn't right. And it was brought back, and it could have been okay, but they didn't give the voters a chance to have their input, and that has not happened to date. Everybody's got an issue out here, it seems like, because they didn't get a direct vote. Things like this should not be decided by the city council. It should have been voted on. You should have stood your ground. And Rick, you've been up there a long time. Brett was upset with the way Deluxe handled, and you're right back at it. Thank you.
And just for the record, everybody's property taxes are going down on the 1st of January, so, 0.28 per thousand.
That's a short, that's a short-term deal, as been pointed out. It's not going to last very long, because if you read your paperwork, it was in the paper, it's not going to stay down, Keith.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else? James?
Dr. Vidruzja, I'm sorry. My name is David Anderson, and I live at 928 Beachley Road in Cedar Woolley here. I apologize for the random bit of Russian. I've been having a bit of trouble remembering if I live in the USA or the USSR. See, in a Western democracy, the people vote for civic improvements, the city does them, end of story. In a corrupt pseudo-communist fascist regime, the people vote for something, then the Politburo hands down an edict for something else. The people get no say, and that's just the way it is. And what you're pushing on us here, we did not vote for. It's not what I petitioned for four years ago either, out in the county. What you've done is taken a completely random piece of legislation, skinned it, shaved it, gutted it, and then collared it back together into a Frankensteinian monster that none of us wanted, that only is what you want. What you're doing is not democratic. It's not American. This is the stuff of banana republics and dictatorships. But hey, what do I know? I'm just an ex-English teacher who taught in the former Soviet Republic of Georgia. Dasvidanya, comrades.
Hi. My name is Kim Devaney, and I live at 738 Fidalgo Street, and I just simply want to say to you all that I think this should be brought to a vote. I am a frequent user of the library. No, I'm not related to anybody that works there, but I think it should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Hi, you guys. Julie Anderson, 314 Hawthorne, Cedar Woolley. We've been a resident of Cedar Woolley for 40 years, and I've been to a few other meetings, and I really do agree with everybody ahead of me. We should vote on it. So, thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
Christine. Christine Johnson, 801 McLean. I'm a city resident, and I, oh, shit. So I'm a city resident, and I, I've been following this obviously from the beginning, and what I think it's about is basically getting a big new building as the library. You know, and I, gosh, I'd like that too. Nobody's afraid of positive change. But as with so many things in life, this comes down to money, and unfortunately, these contracts show that even together, we can't afford a really large, big new building. $5 million may not even buy a new building the size of Cedar Woolley's existing library, which is 8,000 square feet, nowhere near the 20,000-plus-square-feet size needed for all 26,000 residents of city and district. The Congress-proposed new library budget is $5 million also for a 5,000-square-foot building, and getting additional money from the state certainly cannot be counted upon. Plus, the district will be spending much of its money on operational and maintenance costs on this new building, leaving little money to do anything else. So those district residents wanting or needing anything other than a library in Cedar Woolley will go without for many years. There are other options to what's being proposed here. One option would be for the district to contract with the city for library services for $300,000 per year. That revenue would be used for a nice remodel and expansion of the existing building. We'd all get a nicer, larger building, the district could, and the district could more quickly provide meaningful service to their outlying areas. One of the major concerns of those of us who love our library is that we will have no voice on the district board that would control all aspects of this proposed library. The mayor's appointment process of new library board members has confirmed this. He told an applicant he would only appoint people who agreed with him, and he bypassed several wise and thoughtful, longtime library patrons who are also city residents, who have made, who would have made excellent leaders on that board, on that city board, and I'm not talking about my husband. So even if the county commissioners would appoint a city resident to the district board, the mayor will only recommend someone who agrees with him, not anyone with an authentic voice or who is open-minded. The mayor and Aaron Berg tell people that they're all about transparency, yet they hold secret negotiating meetings with district representatives that the other members of the city's negotiating team know nothing about until after the fact. Thus, it's highly unlikely any public meetings on this proposed contracts will be anything other than just for show. So since these contracts transfer all control and nearly all assets of the city library to the district, they amount to annexation of the city by the district, but without the required vote of the people. That's unacceptable, regardless of whether you favor or oppose them. I hope you step back and look at this with fresh eyes and a new perspective. Listen to those city residents who are here tonight telling you they want to input on these decisions. Give us our voice by holding an annexation vote. Please don't let yourselves be pressured into something that really may not be a sound solution for anyone. And finally, please understand that these proposed contracts are not the only way to move forward to a better library for all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Keith Woods, 801 Cedar Woolley. Deborah, are you still the manager of the library? Yes? Is it broke? Well, I mean, is, is it functional okay? So if it's not broke, you don't need to fix it?
Keith, you need to address the council, please.
Well, if it's not broke, we don't need to fix it. We don't need to spend the money. If you want to spend the money, put a white line down at the center of Garden of Eden Row before I run over somebody. Good day.
Thank you, Keith. Mark, can we get a white line down Garden of Eden Row? Anybody else?
Good evening. Loretta Saran in 821 Park Cottage Place in Cedar Woolley, and I am opposed to the library merger. And I had some prepared remarks, but I have been directed to address some things that I have noticed here. First being is our current climate and our national identity and what's going on in our political structure. I am more aware than ever how important democracy is and how it should work. Our founders left us with a good blueprint. Now, our founders did not accomplish this with expediency. Let's get this done. Let's take this care. We're going to eliminate these problems. No, it was a process that democracy gives us, where people with opposing point of views go ahead and discuss things. And it took them quite a while to do it. It wasn't a year to accomplish this, and it was many voices that were at the table, of course, rightfully, as we know today, none were women or of minority, but those things are still being rectified. And also, it took years to get it ratified. And what my concern is the tone around this, library proposal and the way that it's being handled. There were some things that came out from readers that said that people were selfish and those sort of things, and those labels are not necessary, because what we are is we are concerned citizens who value our library, value our government, and have an opposing point of view. I have a seat at the table, and I am grateful for it, and I recognize your seat at the table, and I respect it, and I trust that this is the way we will conduct ourselves. But I'm hearing about that there might be partisan selection on committees. There might be rumors. be winners that don't serve any as well, and yet it's being repeated, kind of like the fake news. I think that one of the things that I want to honor most and ask you to join me in is to honor the process. What is the reason that we have to make this decision now? What is driving it? Why can't we have a meeting where we can have public input on the mayor's proposed partnership concept? And we were told that one of the things that we were going to get, and there's no details on this, was a brand-new library. Again, do we need a library, a brand-new one? We were told that we would get more technology, more space. None of those details have come out. And what about the projected budget? We say five million? Well, we just heard that that's not even conceivable by a lot of people. I looked at the architect suggestion, that isn't going to give us the space that I was kind of led to believe, that it would be bigger and grander and that awful word greater and great, you know, doesn't resonate well with a lot of people nowadays. Because, again, where are the details? Where is the specifics? What is going to be the final cost? What is going to be the final additional square footage to go ahead and serve the more people?
About 30 seconds.
And the technology? These are the things that we need to be discussing and it also needs to be voted on by our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Anyone else? So at this time, I'll close the public comment period. Do we have one? Come right up. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me. Wenji Grahamberg, 1009 Paul T. Road. I don't have a written, prepared statement tonight, please forgive me, but I've been involved in following this issue for quite some time. And I find it very, very disturbing that the nine of you, 10 if you count Erin, are in the minority of wanting this. The majority is wanting more information or an opportunity to vote, and you seem to have zero response or even the idea of discussing that. And it's just all too familiar to the current status, excuse me, the current election that we've had. The people want to vote, the people want to say, for some reason, the nine of you that were voted to represent us seems to think that's not a good idea. And it's very, very disturbing. It's our library, we pay for it, we use the services, as generations of families here have. This is more than books, this is the heart of the community. It is a meeting place, it is a place where lives can change, it's an opportunity for jobs, excuse me, for people to research for jobs, get an education, get legal help if needed. There is a plethora of opportunity and resources at the library. Why you're willing to turn your back on it and show no interest or care for what we are saying just defies all common sense to me. I also find very disturbing your comment here about city employees will be eligible for transfer, i.e. the district agrees to hire those employees who apply to transfer. It all seems very vague. This type of a proposal should have pages and pages of details and dates and processes to follow. And this is a simple memo of an idea of a proposal that you basically are forcing on us and you have no response or seem to have no care or concern for what everyone up here has been saying for over a year. And I just, I fail to understand it. And again, as I've said, it's very disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Macumber, 417 Spring Lane. And I just want to say that I am in favor of a partnership. I believe that, I believe people should have access to libraries across the county. And I believe that this is a step towards a county-wide system, and I think that's what we should all be striving for. I believe libraries are in the business of sharing information, and this is a way to share information with even more people. I think space to do other activities besides just having books is something our community needs desperately. I'm involved in other boards and trying to find meeting space, trying to find places to do activities is extremely difficult. So a place to do things like that. I also have worked with 3D printers and maker spaces, and that's a huge thing that our kids are missing out on by not having access to that technology. And that's something that I think this partnership would allow our residents to have. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. This time, I will close the public comment period and move on to Agenda Item 5, Available Property Tax Refund Levy, which is page 58 through 60 in your packets. And I believe this is Patsy.
The Skagit County Assessor's Office informed us that the full amount of the property tax levy which the council passed was not collected, primarily due to a major refund. Skagit Valley Hospital applied and the Department of Revenue approved their application for tax exemption to property tax for the final portion of the pavilion building which they own. To the best of my knowledge, this is the final piece of property and I'm not, unless they buy more, we're not expecting any future applications. So anyway, similar to last year, there are two refund levies which are available to the council to take should you choose to do so. One for general taxes, which were refunded, and the second for the public safety building bond payment tax. There were a few other smaller parcels which also were either exempted for one reason or another, but the pavilion was the largest. The refund levies are outside of the 1% property tax limit. It's a completely separate calculation. And the purpose is to make the taxing entity whole, to replace those taxes which were legally levied and then not paid. So my request is that you direct staff by motion to either request of the full levies, partial levies, or no refund levy whatsoever. So I'm requesting direction on what I should tell the assessor's office.
Thank you, Patsy. Counsel, do you have any questions for Patsy? So I'll just, we had the same situation last year, and I was sitting in Julia's spot. I'm going to say the same thing I said then. What this amounts to, it's unfortunate, but if we take a levy, it amounts to a retroactive tax increase on citizens. And I hope that you will take no levy. Because we kind of just have to suck it up on the city end, and it makes Patsy's job harder, and I understand that. But I don't think it's right to go back to our citizens with a retroactive tax increase. And that's my opinion on it. And I hope you will take appropriate action. Is there a motion or guidance for staff?
I'm looking for, I'm looking for how much, with no levy, how much of a... I don't see...
There's $2 amounts. The general tax levy that was lost was $5,518.18.
Nope.
What are you looking at?
I've got it. I'm sorry, the amount Erin was mentioning was just the pavilion. The total general fund tax was $8,557.96. And the public safety bond was $988.27, which is noted on page 59 and page 60 of the packet.
So Patsy just needs to know if you want to take a levy, a partial levy, or no levy?
I would like to take no levy myself. I agree with the mayor.
There really is no action required if you don't want to take action. I mean, that's a consensus sort of scenario. If counsel desires to take no levy, then you move on to your next item and that's what we'll do.
Okay, sounds like no action, so no levy, so no retroactive tax increase, and we'll figure out how we're going to do more with less. Under Unfinished Business, Library Partnership Concept, pages 61 through 70 in your packet. And Erin, you want to take this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the city council adopted Resolution 94316 back in June, which established a public process to consider any possible proposals that would come out of the negotiating committee process. That process resulted in the proposal, which is in your packets on page 62, and therefore, this is the beginning of the public process. The item on the agenda tonight is not the concept, it's to establish a meeting date at which point the community can come together, hear the concept in detail, ask questions, be engaged. So specifically, what the city council committed to was a first reading of the concept at a special meeting with a minimum of 10 days' notice that would be a workshop or open house type format. So this was a request of the community, many of whom are here tonight, and that's step one. Step two, then, is following that meeting if the city council desires to proceed, you would have another meeting. And at that meeting, you would potentially give direction to move the concept into more of a detailed drafting phase, where you could end up with actual agreements down to the detail that we've heard some people ask for tonight. Those set of agreements would then go to a third meeting, also including public participation, including public comments, for a first reading, and ultimately to at least a second reading. So there are a minimum of four meetings between now and any possible vote to say yes, with opportunity to change the negotiating committee's recommendation at any point in that process. So tonight, the question's just when? And normally, you know, the mayor would call a special meeting, but it's really important to get all the council there and to pick a time that you think is targeted to offer the greatest opportunity for public participation. So that's why this is on your agenda, to set the date, when normally that's the sort of activity the mayor would just do on his own. So that's the action requested tonight, is when? The other question for you is, would you like to utilize a facilitator, as we did at the last kind of workshop, open house meeting, in terms of the structure of the meeting? So probably the key is the date, and if you don't have a, you know, one date, if you had a few dates, then that would give us the ability to potentially contact the facilitator if you'd like and try to fit that in, make sure the room's available and all that. So just identifying a range of a few opportunities would be helpful.
I like the idea of bringing in a facilitator. I think it kind of neutralizes, she or he is not coming in with any kind of formed opinion. So I think it's good to have that. I think it helped the last meeting that we had flow quite well, so gave everybody a chance to speak as they wanted.
Did you like the facilitator that was here for the last meeting?
I did, yeah. I thought she did a good job.
Yes, I think she did too.
I've not talked to her since that point, so I'll have to reach out to her and find out, you know, if she's interested, willing, and then secondarily, if she's available. So when would you like to do this? Is this something you want to do before the end of the year, after the new year?
After the new year.
And not on the holiday weekend, like not during that week, vacations and...
Yeah.
So it sounds like you're thinking it would not be the first week of January with the holidays, so sometime after January 9th. City council's already meeting on the 11th. This meeting is not, you committed to doing this meeting not at a regular meeting, so it needs to be at a different meeting other than the one on the 11th. So I don't know if you're thinking, you know, the 12th, the 13th, Friday the 13th?
That works. That's Martin Luther King weekend.
I mean, it's fine, but I was just saying for, you know, people might be using that extra day to go on a trip or whatever.
Were you thinking New Year's Day holiday on the 2nd? In terms of the holiday you wanted to avoid, or are you thinking the 16th?
Yeah, the 11th is, shortly after the 9th would be cool, or even that weekend before, that Friday before, the 6th.
Well, you, yeah, you've got the 6th, Friday, you've got a third Wednesday, which is often a decent opportunity, since most of you have already scheduled, you know, Wednesdays, more or less.
What about the 23rd, it's a Monday?
23rd?
That would work.
Be great to have a couple choices, again, if we want to try to schedule, so...
Well, we need to give 10 days in advance, correct? So...
We'll give us plenty. It's 10 days or more, so...
So that's one date? Does that work for all of the members of the council? January 23rd? I assume we're talking an evening meeting?
As far as I can see, it's clear as a whistle.
Okay. Now what about the 18th?
I prefer not.
Okay. What about the 12th or the 13th?
Those would work.
I'd rather it not be a Friday.
Thursday and Friday.
People do plans on Fridays, so to make it as convenient as possible.
Thursday would be possible, the 12th.
12th's an option for everybody?
Right.
Yeah, what about the...
Of course, Mr. Lumley can't really tell when he's going to be needed.
We can make it work.
So since we have a...
Two dates.
What about a set of dates?
Only got two at this point. Yeah, I was hoping maybe...
Might get a third if we're trying, if council thinks we would benefit from a facilitator.
What about the 17th?
We need to give them some sort of range too.
17th, that would give us basically, that's a Tuesday, the 17th, that would potentially give us one, one meeting per, you know, one, three different, you know, weeks in a row with possible dates.
Tuesday, the 17th.
Oh, I won't be available that day.
Okay.
Me neither.
Okay, well, that makes that easy then.
Tuesday, the 10th?
The 18th, 23rd, or what was it?
The 10th is possible.
The 10th, yeah.
Yeah.
No good for you?
No. You get something.
Yeah, I do actually have something, but...
Well, so then what about the following week? There's the 31st?
Well, yeah, and that would be fine.
Okay, that would give me three, I think three dates is fine to give, and if for some reason it doesn't work, we'll get back to you and find another date. The key, I mean, we don't want to pick a date that somehow excludes anybody from the city council and certainly want to get the most public participation as possible. All right, so I've got the 12th, the 23rd, and the 31st. So time of day, I don't know how long this meeting will go. I suggest maybe we start earlier than 7 o'clock.
No, I would think 7...
Maybe 6?
6, sure.
To at least give it a little more opportunity for, okay, 6:00 PM start. Okay. I think that's what we're looking for on this item. I'll contact the facilitator that we used last time and find out what her availability is. And with that, the mayor will have the information necessary to call a special meeting and endeavor to get that notice out really as soon as possible. So we may have 30 days' notice or even more.
So this was a promise that the council made back in June by resolution to guarantee the public process. Some of you have already seen that the initial partnership concept is in the packet. You know, for 11 months, people have been worried about what might be in there, what the real plan is, or all kinds of things. You finally have something which to be either angry about or happy about... You finally have something, which to be either angry about, or happy about, or somewhere in between, and it took a lot of work, and I appreciate the help that I got on both sides of our negotiating team, and the district board members who have been patient, worked with me, and everybody else who's been patient. So we finally have something to look at that seems acceptable on both sides, might need some tweaking, but there it is, eleven months later, something to really hang your hat on or throw darts at. Okay, moving on, committee reports.
Oh, do we need to do this?
Um, I think we, oh.
Lay that tip.
You're right, I got a couple of, what do we have on here?
And I will, I will move that we ratify the city supervisor's signature on the attached grant agreement with Commerce for the stop grant.
I second.
Well, I think we should at least let people know what it's about before we make a motion, but the motion stands, so who wants this one? I can read it.
Police Department.
Police Department? The, the stop violence against women formula grant?
I, it's, you've got all the information, the specific information, I guess a thumbnail version of it is, every year, we have a stop grant that allows a partnership with the prosecutor's office, Skagit Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Services, and a police agency as a representative of law enforcement, and we rotate the responsibilities around to different police departments. Mount Vernon had it the last couple of years, and it's our turn. This is something we've had twice in the last ten or twelve years, and it kind of fell on ours, 'cause I became the board president of Skagit Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Services this last month, and I lost a vote or won a vote, I don't know which, but it just was a kind of a logical direction for us to take this year. We're gonna use it to fund some training for our smart investigators, and get some equipment, and possibly fund a program that is being done through Skagit Domestic Violence, we follow the assessment protocol, and help fund some of that transition. So that's kind of the thumbnail sketch, we've done this before, fairly simple grant, we've worked with Jody at Commerce, and it's really easy for us to work through.
Okay, the recommendation, which I believe action's already been taken on, was a motion to ratify the city supervisor's signature for the attached grant agreement with Commerce for a $10,200 stop grant. That motion was made by Councilman Judith Dunleavy and seconded by Councilman Carnegie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Also in late materials?
Oh, that was no action, right?
No action required, huh? We extended the chief's contract with the city. Congratulations.
Nice.
Tried to get it free for six months, but...
Without a six-month sabbatical, yeah.
Just to be clear, what we gave you there is that the contract you approved had a Scribner's error, or you could call it an Ehrenberg error, to be more accurate. I had his contract with a gap from January one of seventeen to, I think it would have been May thirty of seventeen, so...
A sabbatical.
Yeah, he was on a sabbatical, he did come in and ask, what was your plan for me for the first half of next year? Do you want me to come to work on the first, or what were you thinking? So the rest of the contracts, obviously, all started with Jan- January, so I just wanna make sure you saw that, that we corrected that, and you've got it for your information.
Okay, thank you. Written reports, chief.
Just briefly, we had a couple of things coming up recently. We're gonna be dividing the city up, and I may have spoken about this before, into zones, and we've been getting input from our patrol officers on some of our most problematic areas, and we're starting to divide up the officers to pick a zone where they're gonna be responsible for each zone. Basically, it's intel-driven policing, that's to focus our efforts on some of our hotspots, what we call them, and there's typically in the four zones, there's one or two places in each zone that gets a little extra attention. And what I mean by that is, it gets regular drive-bys, we run license plates that show up at these places, we hook people up on warrants, we, you know, do all sorts of, just increase scrutiny on them at that point, and hopefully drive the problem out of town or correct it, and we use, code enforcement's gonna be part of this, as well as, you know, the building department, when we get the code enforcement issues, hopefully we'll get them to be assisting us, and we'll do everything we can to try to change, change behavior is what we're looking for. But what we're really doing by dividing it up into zones is putting a specific group of people in charge of being responsible for that zone. So if there's something going on in the north end of Reed Street, I can go directly to a board in the squad room, and if there's nothing on the board, and I wanna know there's a problem there, I can ask the officers that are in charge of that, why isn't there anything up here? And we'll get a specific response. If you leave everything up, just if anybody wants to put something up there, then it seems like nobody does anything. So we're just kind of organizing into more intelligence-driven policing, which has been a proven thing that works. And on a fun note, this last Sunday, I got to go to Walmart, Walmart sponsored a shop with a hero day. I was there, several deputies, Mount Vernon Police Department, Sox Waddle, I think their entire police department was there, there was a couple of Department of Corrections, and there were kids that, I don't know how they were vetted, but they were brought in, and Walmart provided gift cards for them, and we got to walk around and shop with them and help them choose a certain amount of presents and stuff like that. I got a very wonderful young lady, whose teacher brought her and her little sister in, and we spent, I think Mount Vernon, or Walmart kicked in about three hundred bucks for this family for their Christmas presents, and we picked them all out for her and her family, so it was a lot of fun, had a good time. And that's all I have.
Thanks. Anybody have anything for chief? John?
Well, Planning Commission, nothing new to report, we haven't had a meeting since the last council meeting. Next week, we're having a public hearing with the hearing examiner for two proposals for apartments, so the apartment ball is still rolling, I think there should be not a big deal. Everything seems to be pretty okay with the proposals, but going through the due process, as well as working on lots of other building projects, that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, John. Mark?
Last time we met, I told you that we were unsuccessful with the TIB applications for the year. We did get some good news from TIB two weeks ago. We have passed the first hurdle for a complete streets grant for $125,000. We have to submit a work plan. We think it's just a formality, but that's due on the twentieth, we'll send that in. We're gonna combine those dollars with $50,000 we had already budgeted to do sidewalk and handicap ramp upgrades in a number of targeted locations in the city, so that's a good boost in the arm for us. We have three years to spend the money, but if you spend it early, then you're eligible for the next call, so we plan to go ahead and do that this next year as a part of that previously planned project, so anyway, we'll give you more information on that as it develops. David Lee and I are busily updating our Segawooli Public Works Department standards. It was a follow-up action to your action on updating the municipal codes sections thirteen thirty-six and thirteen forty, plus other parts, to implement the low-impact development provisions that are required of the city now through the Department of Ecology's storm water permit process. That's an administrative action on my part, they don't require council action, I just wanted to make you aware that that's going on. We'll publish those by the end of the year, there'll probably be some additional revisions over the course of the succeeding months, but this, they're mostly minor changes, although I am taking the opportunity to do the tweaks and updates that have been accumulating for the last six or seven years on those standards. What those do is basically give developers and builders the guidelines on how to develop plans for civil improvements in the right-of-way of the city. They're based on the city code's broad direction, and they just provide them the detailed implementation of how to prepare those plans and specs, so that when we review them, they're formatted in a manner that makes it easy for us to review. That's about it for now, thank you.
Okay. Let me ask you a question.
On the sidewalks, I think that, over the years, I've spoke to maybe creating like a sidewalk or a walking arterial. What's the plan, or how do we go forward with this? Or is this something that we can send to the Planning Commission to create like a walking arterial for our city?
Well, we already have in the pass and trail section of the comprehensive plan, a pass and trails plan, it's been in there for many years. That actually was not changed with the most recent comp plan update, it's pretty complete. And we have in the chapter three transportation program, our arterial-related paths and trails that go along with that, and sidewalks, and shared-use paths that we have. So that's documents already exist, and you should review those and see if there's something that you're interested in adding to those, or changing on those.
Well, I guess my main focus is, is thinking about where people walk, schools and shopping, community centers, things like that, I'll have to look at it.
Yeah, that is what that's intended to do.
Okay.
And we've been working towards that plan for many years, that part of what we've done with our sidewalk projects over the last eight years has, well, every project that we have uses the complete streets mentality or concept, and that does include looking at non-motorized transportation methods for all projects that we build, and I think we've been pretty successful with adding those things with the projects we've done. We're continuing to do that, for instance, we're rebidding the trail project on the north side of Highway twenty from Hodgins Road to Highway nine in February, is when we're gonna advertise that, close it in March. That'll add another 3,000 feet to the system, and we're just continuing to do that. But again, we would welcome the input on those two plans, and if you need any help finding those, just contact me or John, we'll be able to give you that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, and thanks for the email that you sent me from Mr. Mangold, who lives out on Rhodes Road. I'll forward this to all the council members, but it concerns the Jamison Street, 'cause you all remember, we had a room full of people who thought that that was gonna ruin the city. He lives there, it says, "Just an update on the Jamison Roundabout from a perspective of a resident living there," and he goes on to detail what he's seen in terms of increases, but closes with, "The roundabout has made it much easier, safer, to enter, exit, and traverse Highway nine in my estimation, and all in all, a good trade-off so far as the increased traffic on Rhodes Road." So that's nice to know that somebody's taken the time to look at it, evaluate it, and has a positive opinion. I'll forward that to you all.
When will we have the numbers for that traffic study that's happening there right now?
We actually met with the county two weeks ago, and there's tubes out there on Jamison right now. They're doing the roundabout intersection in this month, in early January, I'll have those counts probably, you know, sometime later in January. And they'll be doing our normal counts on all of our various locations. I've expanded it significantly. We normally do tube counts, which gives us an average daily traffic over a 24-hour period. We do that at about thirteen locations citywide, mostly arterials at the city limits and those things, and then we do turning motions, which provide us the information on vehicles turning and types of vehicles, at another half a dozen locations. This year, I've expanded that to thirty, and what we're trying to do is make sure we validate our assumptions, not just for the Jamison project, although that's the main driver, but also from what we did for the Highway twenty and Cook and Ferry Street project two years ago. So this'll give us a good look and work well with what we did with the transportation update last year, where we studied every intersection, basically, in town that was on an arterial. So I'll have that information in February, and I'll definitely bring that to council and let you know how our projections turned out on Jamison in particular, and then citywide, what trends we're seeing. Just anecdotally, as the mayor said, I've had input from several of the residents over on Rhodes Road. Some of them have indicated they've noticed some uptick in traffic, a little bit of more truck traffic, although I have been communicating with Mr. Mangold, and I asked him specifically, "Are you seeing more trucks?", and he said, "I haven't." But there are some people definitely using that. Mostly, he was expressing that he sees high school students using it and driving a little too fast, although he said most people are staying at 25 or less. Mostly, it's been positive, there'll be some of that outliers, but it appears to be working well, and no major issues that we've seen.
Thank you, Mark. Erin?
Well, 2016 has been a year of a lot of collaborations, partnerships, working with other entities, so I guess I'll wrap up with a few items that we've accomplished, some milestones, some projects that are coming to an end. First, on the Swift Center project, Port of Skagit Board of Commissioners approved the transfer agreement last night, so that's now being transferred over to the state's capable hands to finish up on their side of the process and get a signature on that. And what that will do is set into motion, you know, what is really a multi-year process of the property being transferred from state DES ownership to Port of Skagit ownership and local control. So that's been a huge success, a lot of work, and really a great opportunity for the county, the city, the port, and the state to come together. And that continues tomorrow, as we've turned our focus a bit to behavioral health and kind of trying to support our partners with improvements in that system countywide, and even in the North Sound region. We're meeting Representative Robinson up at the center tomorrow to talk about some of those issues and a budget request there. On the EMS front, you probably saw in your packet, the county commissioners are taking the last step of their process, or maybe the first step of the next phase, we'll see next week. So Councilmember Dunleavy and I participated in, actually don't remember how many meetings now, a series, a lengthy series of facilitated meetings with stakeholders...
Way more for you than me.
...to discuss the future of EMS. Ultimately, came out with a recommendation that included, has a divergent opinion from, I think, three members, and that's what's being handed to the county commissioners. Of course, you have all been briefed at council meetings, so we'll see what's happened. I've shared the city council's perspective, that you're comfortable moving on to the next phase of discussing implementation of an EMS district countywide. It's kind of up to the commissioners and our, in that case, our nine partners that are necessary to move that project forward, to see what happens. On the Skagit 911 front, you all approved the inter-local agreement here last month, I think City of Mount Vernon has it on the agenda for tonight, Skagit County is taking action possibly on Monday, so I do believe that that project, which has been in the hopper for three years now, will come to fruition, and I'm really excited about that because we can move on to other things. On the DEM project, we're not quite as far along, the mayor and I went to Camp Murray, was that last week? I think it was last week.
Last week, yeah.
Yeah, to tour Camp Murray and talk to state DEM officials about just some of the different models that they see in Washington's 39 counties, and what models work better than others. They were very, very careful not to call anybody out as not having a good model, or really even to share any great models by county, they kept it abstract, but it was useful. So the meeting included county officials, and I think we were the only city reps, no, City of Mount Vernon had their fire chief there.
True.
So a couple city officials and county, oh, and the mayor of Hamilton. So it was a small group, but what we're trying to do is figure out, how do we meet the state mandate for emergency management in a way that's fair? And structurally, we had a model that worked pretty well since 1981, it was modified here about a year and a half ago. We don't perceive that as being responsive to the city's needs. The cities collectively, the four cities collectively pay more than half of the cost of operating DEM in terms of the budget. The county contributes a lot of staff when incidents occur. So, you know, some of the questions are, well, what do counties do regardless of agreements? Just what do they do in general? What are we required to do? How do we coordinate? And I think we all walked away with a sense that it would be better to maintain the partnership and have... and have that communication, particularly during emergencies, but there are a lot of counties in our state that do not have a consolidated DEM. You know, they'll have, uh, multiple cities that have partnered, for example, in Snohomish County, you might have three cities that have come together to run one, the county runs one, and a big city might run their own. So, then you end up coordinating between those entities, and the, and the tie for how you aggregate groups is a population minimum that allows you to qualify for, uh, federal pass-through dollars that are allocated per capita. So, stay tuned on that one. The jail project, we've, uh, had our last jail finance committee meeting of the year. Uh, Mount Vernon's finance director was, was probably happy, I think, to have her last jail finance committee before she moves to the Clean Air Agency and passes the reins on. Uh, we recommended approval of the budget that was proposed. Significant staffing increases, uh, I mean, really, a lot of new employees are being hired at the jail. So, if you know of anybody who's interested in the corrections industry, they're going to have a, a, a state-of-the-art facility, um, sort of a, a renewed vision of how you deal with incarcerated people and the demand for employees. So, there's opportunity there if their folks are interested. But that project is on track, it's on time, and it's on budget. So, we will have a new jail in 2017. We anticipate substantial completion in the spring. So, it's a $60 million, uh, 30-year partnership project, and, uh, we, we just can't wait to get it open so we can start addressing some of the backlogs. And then the last mention from me tonight is, uh, our annual employee recognition luncheon is December 22nd at high noon, and it'll be here, actually, at Fire Station 1 in the fire bays, and I hope all, all of you will be able to come. Thank you.
Patsy?
Yesterday, the Washington State Department of Licensing implemented its new software. This is GIS-based, and the reason I'm mentioning it to you is this is the software that determines who is billed and gets to pay the City of Sedro-Wooly, um, license tab fee for the transportation benefit district. You've heard me discuss it several council meetings, how there are, um, more errors, it seems, than correctnesses, but, um, we're looking forward to issuing fewer refund checks and that only the people who are within the city limits getting billed. So, we're hopeful that this will be a positive new software implementation.
Okay. Judith?
Actually, I don't have anything tonight, except a contact that's bothering me, so...
Oh. Oh, keep it moving, got it. Jermaine?
I, I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and slash Happy Holidays and Happy New Year, in case I don't see ya.
Brenda?
Joanne? I just want to thank everybody within the city. Joanne here at the, um, City Hall and her staff who decorated and the fire department that put together the, uh, whoever it is that put together the lights on the fires, um, truck, that was absolutely gorgeous. Anyway, it was a great parade. Thank you, Nathan. I know your team worked really hard to make that happen.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry to miss it.
Um, yeah, I just want to thank everybody involved. It was just, uh, another wonderful parade, and I wish everybody a wonderful Christmas and Happy New Year.
Chuck?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, tomorrow at the senior center, and they're having their Christmas, uh, dinner, and, um, Ellen has asked me to invite any of your seniors that, um, want to participate in, in a, a nice meal, and I think the, the main, uh, item is prime rib, and, and they have a, a real nice salad bar, too, and the trimmings that go with that, don't ask me why, but, but anyway, your, your seniors are invited, and, um, normally, and the cost is like, it's, it's voluntary if you don't have the, the money, but usually, it's three and a half to $5, so, I used to pay $5, so, but anyway, you are invited, and, and there's some nice people down there, the fellowship with some of the older people, and I see some gray tops out here. So, that's all I have.
Don't be confused by some that aren't gray.
Rick?
Yeah. In light of the weather we've had and some snow that we've actually had, had some, some positive and some complaints about the streets, that, yeah, the major intersections seem to get sanded and, and moved, but some of the semi-regular arterials were being neglected, and side roads were being neglected, so if resources were available to get a little more attention out to things like railroad and some of those semi-major arterials, just to kind of move some snow or the ice, other than that...
Okay, thank you.
If resources become available.
Brett?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, for me, uh, because I see Ann Sweeney back there, and Aaron mentioned the progress we made at the Swift Center and the transfer, um, Department of Emergency Services, we could not have made that much progress without you, and I really appreciate your work, Ann. Thank you. Um, we had an overturned vehicle on Highway 20 the other day, um, and it was just an amazing response. I got some great pictures. We were there within minutes, and, and all our emergency services were there way before that, so, great response. Dean's not here, but Chief, you guys were there, Central Valley was there. We had a huge response. The lady was trapped in the car initially, and, uh, they did a great job extracting her, and I think everybody was okay, but wonderful response. Lost a army, so, darn. Congratulations to them, though. It was a wonderful game, and Merry Christmas to everybody. Without objection, I will adjourn. We stand adjourned.